2019 to order and turn it over to Michelle.
Good evening. We're here to discuss the creation of an independent citizen salary commission, which would establish and review salaries for the male mayor and council members. The purpose of the commission is to set salaries that reflect compensation for the duties of the position of mayor and council members, removing all political considerations from the process, as well as trying to attract qualified citizens into public service for the city of Shelton. The commission would meet periodically to study establish compensation levels and look at clear and specific data regarding the time commitments and duties of the positions that you all perform. Comparison study was completed reflecting salary and benefit data from comparable cities. And I know you have that spreadsheet in front of you. I found that the average council compensation, the mean was $393 with the median being $450. For the mayor, the average compensation was $1,198 with the median being $870. So if the city does choose to create a salary commission, the elected officials are paid the salaries established by the commission, although they are subject to referendum. If the referendum is not filed within 30 days, then the new salaries are effective immediately, except in the case of a decrease. So.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle.
Mm-hmm.
Jeff, do you have anything?
We had, we also had a little bit of information of what the assessed values were amongst the various communities so you could make that comparison, as well as the cities on your comparison chart that are either a city council manager form of government like we are here, or a strong mayor form of government as we see in some other cities. I think, let's see, Shelton, we have an assessed value, and these are for 2019 budget purposes, 712, there's too many commas in there, 712, 548,758. In comparison, we have Yelm, or I'm sorry, Kelso would be the highest among this range. Kelso is a city manager, or sorry, council manager form of government, similar to us, but their assessed value, property value is 871 million. And on the low end is Hoquiem with a, they have a strong mayor form of government and their assessed value is 442,292,250, with all the others within that range. And we, there is pretty much an even split between whether it's a strong mayor or a council manager form of government. With that, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, I could start the conversation because this kind of came from my conversations with Vicki Look. When we started this, the plan was, and just to re-educate everybody with what I've said before, is she said, here's some comps and stuff, we need to set a salary for the new council. And then, you know, we need to do that like now because of the time constraints. And then, when the new council is formed, then the way you do this is you get a salary commission to come and, you know, explain, you know, to look over things and to come up with a, with the correct salaries. Okay? I'm a little shocked at how low the council salaries are from this list, but I was not surprised to see the mayor's salaries. At previous meetings, I have mentioned the fact that the requirements of a mayor of even the size of a city of Shelton, Washington, if you really want to get involved, those time allotted to the different functions, I mean, you have the ribbon cutting things, and then you have, you know, the honorary mayor comes and, you know, greets Denny Heck when he comes to town, and you have the, you know, I just know that as a mayor, my time was triple what it is right now, at least. And that, I think in order to, whoever is mayor after Bob, and even now, but it probably would not be anything but, I definitely think 500 is extremely low, as it's kind of proven here by these other things. So I don't know, you know, I just thought, because it was explained to me that this was the way it was going to happen, is just like, kind of like, oh, this is what you would do. The other deal is, we set those and we didn't, I mean, we didn't do any massive studying or anything on what those would be, and we didn't think much, I don't think, about the mayor's salary separate. So having said all that, I mean, we have to figure out what we want to do, because I, I think the most important thing is whoever is the mayor needs to have good compensation for what they're doing. If they're going to start going to, I mean, you could go to a meeting a day, an event a day, 365 days out of the, you get invited to everything. Don't you get them in your little mailbox?
A lot of people get invited to lots of things.
And you don't have to go to, go to those, you know, but, you know, I went to a lot more when I was mayor than I am now. So that's my story, so I just throw that up.
Okay. Comments on setting up a salary commission?
Well, if we set up-
Questions or comments?
I'm just a little concerned about time, time constraint on that. I mean, we're not going to get a commission formed for the election, before the primary.
I don't think there's any way this is going to happen for this election. We're, we're thinking, whether it's formed or not this year, it'd be for the future.
It'd be for the future.
Whether Shelton wants a salary commission.
Well, he's looking at this chart here, you look at Schehalis is pretty low, but then you look over here, and they throw in benefits, so I would assume that's about a grand.
No, it says it's paid by the council member.
Yeah, can I clarify that?
What's that?
Says it's paid by the council member.
Where's it say that?
All right.
Clear, under the notes.
Oh, by council member, okay.
So my read of that, they can participate in the city pool, but they, they carry the whole cost of it.
And as a council, in order to participate in the city pool with AWC for benefits to be offered, over 50% of the council needs to opt in for the plan. So if there are seven-member council, at least four members need to be on the plan. If there aren't four, then at the beginning of the next month, if one or two would drop off, then the plan is null and void.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
Wow.
So the previous three had been grandfathered in.
Another way to possibly look at this, and again, I don't know, I don't really care because I'm going to be gone, it won't affect me at all, but it is possible that if we did not set this salary commission, then this group could choose to win in January 1st, win a, whether it's Bob or anyone else in this group, is then appointed the task of being mayor. We could choose, aside from this, to, to, I think, offer a higher financial package to whoever's going to be mayor for the city. I mean, this has happened with Scott Hillburn, when he, he was kind of going to retire out of this position, he, he thought, you know, we really want to have some financial incentive to, to do this, and they did it without any salary commission. So my main concern is that the mayor has some financial compensation for the amount of work that it takes to be a mayor for a city. I think that's my main concern. As far as the other people, to me, you know, I mean, it looks like they fall in to most of the other lines. So would that be a possible option, then, if we chose to do that? I mean, maybe we say, no, we want to, don't want to do that, but I think the mayor's duties in this, in this, on this council are, can be a lot more than what most of us are doing.
So just as a point of clarification, I don't believe you have to have a salary commission, the council could absolutely do it themselves, but any change could not take place until the following election. So after the election took place, then the change would go into effect.
Right, absolutely. Well, the next election.
November, the November election.
It's, I believe it's the election for the member that's being changed.
Right, so you would, yeah, so during your term, you would not see a change in your salary, right, if the council were to change it, and it would have to be a voted-on change?
Correct.
Right.
And I just want to clarify something, since council member Crofts is focused on the mayor, the list here that has fairly, that raise the average of the mayor's salary, those are probably mayor, council, cities, I'm assuming.
Strong.
So Yelm is 2,500 per month, and that is a strong mayor. Sedgwick Willie is at 2,301 per month, and that is also a strong mayor. So all the other ones are council managers.
And that's the point I want to make, is we now, with a manager council, the mayor is part of the council, he's selected by the council. He has presider duties and ceremonial duties, but it's not anywhere close to what it was in the commission. So I'm, I'm just making that statement that we, I'm not sure we can use past mayorial duties in Shelton to look forward to the current mayor, because if you're asking me to 10 more events, I hear that, but-
No, no, I'm not asking.
But the responsibilities are completely different.
Yeah.
Under either form.
To beg to differ on that one, when there comes to an event, or someone to sign the paper, or someone to meet somebody, generally speaking, they ask for the mayor to do that. I'm sure that, you know, that, they don't ask for a council person to come and do that. And that taking your opinion and canceling these higher-priced ones, still the others are between 800 and 1,200, it looks like, dollars, or 700 to 1,200 dollars, which is almost double what the normal, I'm just saying, that's what I feel, you know, that, that is my main probably concern about this, is that who wants to perform that duty, you know, I mean, all the other cities pay more for their mayor, I think, than, except for Shelton, and we didn't really think about that much. So, I mean, if you want to follow the crowd, which we all want to do.
So that would be a topic for the future?
Mm-hmm.
Correct. So going back to the topic for today, about salary commission. Do you want to, further discussion on that, what, again, with the idea that it's not going to be implemented immediately, but long-term, whatever long-term means, next year or whenever, do we want to implement a salary commission for Shelton? Councilmember Schmidt? I mean, if I'm not in spite, I thought you were going to say something.
No, I, I guess I'm, I did some reading on this, and it's not a requirement, it's not, it sends a weird message, I'll be frank about it. It sends a weird message that we're looking for pay raises, or something like that. And that's not what its intention is, and his intention is to have a democratic way of applying, you know, fair and comparable salaries to the elected body of the city. However, that's not the message that people hear, and I don't, I don't believe it's probably an appropriate time to do that. And especially after seeing the comparable numbers, which is now all public record, of course, I think we're doing just fine the way we are, without the commission established. The one comment that I'm interested in maybe discussion on is, it was brought up a couple different times, I think, is to find qualified candidates? Trying to understand what that means. What does that mean to you guys?
Quality.
Quality?
Well, to me, it means not retired or rich, so.
Okay.
I mean, like, people to actually give up their job, or, I guess now it's different than the commission, but I just think that if you don't want somebody that's retired or rich, maybe offer a little bit more. I don't need it, you know?
I'm just-
I'm gone. I'm only doing this because I really feel the mayor-
I know, you keep telling us about how you're gone, but you're still here, so. I, I'm just, I'm just curious, I, it, when it comes to a recruiting tactic, again, I think you got to be careful about how that's phrased.
Yeah, how it's worded, yeah.
How it's worded, I, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to detract anyone from wanting to run for public office.
Correct.
Because we don't pay enough, or we pay too much. I think that's a delicate, delicate line, we got to law, we got to walk on that, I think.
I also don't, I'm, I'm sorry, Joe.
No, you're fine.
I also don't really have a dog in the fight here, but as I was elected a commissioner, and my salary carried on till my term is up, just like Gary and Kathy's. But I also recognize the fact that Bob and Deidre do more work than the rest of us. And, I don't know, I, I think Deidre's always busy doing something, I'm telling you.
But I would make the argument, if I may, that as Bob pointed to, the mayor and deputy mayor being members of the seven-person council, and just being one of those roles, I would also say that we had the opportunity to not go forward during the vote, if that was not a position that we were willing to take on.
Correct.
So those responsibilities were a choice that we made. And I think there's a, a level of equality to that. As far as the salary commission, I like the idea of the transparency and the ability to reevaluate and have the public involved in that process. I don't know that now is the time for that, or that it's necessary. I think we have a lot of things to focus on. I think we, quite frankly, haven't had even a full year yet as council, and I don't know that we have a good grasp on how the council will continue to function, and if that is in line with the compensation we're receiving, and how that fits in with comp. So for me, I think timing is the big issue. Sorry, my voice is still bug on.
I understand what Joe was saying, too, about how it might look to the public, but I also understand what fair is. And I personally think that the, the public would understand if it's explained to them. I mean, I mean, compared to what the commission was, this is still kind of like peanuts, right? And there's a lot of work we do. We've done a lot of work this last year that, I mean, I was told today that, you know, the person I was talking to is just so pleased to see the progress we've made in a year, compared to what it was, well, a little over a year for me, but, so, that's my two cents worth.
Well, the other, let me just throw this in on Joe's comment about this isn't the right time and stuff. Well, my deal is, if you turn this over to salary commission, that tells the public, you're not going, you're not in this. This is a commission that's going to look at this. And based upon, if they look at this, it don't look like many people are going to get a raise anyway. Okay, so, I mean, you know, so, except for the mayor's position. And that's the only thing I have to say, if we're expecting someone to run the city and be the mayor and the spokesperson to do this, that I think they should get more money, as it's indicated by all the rest of these. And if you don't do it now, you're going to wait till next year? And then if you do it, then that, whoever's mayor after January is not going to be able to take part of that, which means you're going to have a mayor for, I believe, a two-year period?
No, well, not a salary commission, no.
Salary commission sets it, it immediately takes effect, yeah.
If a salary, and I think a salary commission would come back with more than 500 bucks a month for the mayor, I think.
So just to clarify, if the salary commission sets the salary, it's immediate, or the next month? If the council does it themselves, you have to wait until the, after the following election?
Right. So if you, if you wanted the next mayor of the city to whoever it's going to be, to get more than this 500 bucks a month, then I think we need to make a decision, that's what I'm trying to say.
Well, they could get it, even if it was February, if a salary commission set in February, wanted to raise the salary, they would still get it in February, rather than January, so, I mean, it's.
But the question is, do we want to set up a salary commission? I'll, I'll give you my two cents. I, I do not like salary commissions on any level. You know, all they, they're going to do exactly, we have one position or two positions, if you call it mayor and deputy mayor. They're going to look at equivalent cities, that we're in the range, if we think we're super low, we're super high, we should take the heat, and not assign it to three people, unelected people. And that's my opinion of salary commissions. And in this case, I also agree with Deidre, the timing, on top of not liking salary commissions, the timing of this is, seems inappropriate.
Because it's too soon?
It's too soon, we, we were just elected on this salary, and everyone ran on this salary, and everybody was happy to run on this, I believe everybody was happy, and to me, the salary has nothing, if I was working, still working, the salary would not have been a factor, because I can't survive on 500 dollars a month, or even a thousand dollars a month.
No, you should be able to, just be fine.
It's the time commitment, and I think that's, if we can help with time commitments for people, and not have, you know, not have meetings all the time, which I know City Manager Knighton is really working on, I appreciate that, I think that's going to entice more people to run than getting a couple hundred bucks more a month, because most people who work can't, we're never going to pay people a month to run for city council.
But correction, we did, we did all run on a higher salary, it was changed before the election. I paid a registration fee based on-
500 dollars a month.
On 25,000 a year. It was changed, it was changed after that.
Yeah, I definitely-
That's when you ran for commission.
I definitely was under the assumption that it was when the council was established, it was established at 500 dollars a month.
Yeah, but when we, when we filed, it was not.
Filing fees, I believe, I'm 99% sure the filing fee was based on the, the current salary for the council.
Because I believe that was a big rush to get it, to get it approved.
So just on the research that we did, preparing for this meeting, the salaries were established on December 11th of 2017, and the filing period, if I remember right, was-
19th.
The 19, it was Monday through Wednesday of the following week, I don't remember the exact date.
Well, I, I paid on the, on the higher rate, and they, and then Karen Hirsch said, too bad, so sad they changed it. But no, it was not a big deal, because I didn't run for the money, so.
Well.
You probably did, too. We probably all did.
It was 500 bucks, because I remember when they were discussing establishing the council, and how much the salaries were going to be set at, it was always that 500 dollar number, because it was supposed to be a cost savings to the city, as well. That was the other piece of it. My other, other question with it, with this is, what, what does it take to establish and then maintain the salary commission? Bob says there's, excuse me, Mayor Rogers says there's three members, but I was looking through some RCWs, and it's like 10 or nine, or, what are we talking about?
Yeah, the number is up to council, it could be three or five, could be seven. I wouldn't recommend any more than five, but you always want an odd number, so that you don't have a type of, but it's basically established by ordinance, and then the council determines when the salary commission will meet, whether it's twice a year, once a year, or what have you, and provides them with the resources in order to do the job, which is basically some of Michelle's time.
And the salary commission members are city residents, it's, or it's whatever the council decides?
No, they would have to be city residents.
City residents.
And they would be appointed by council to a term to be determined, whether that's a four-year term, or whatever it happens to be.
And I guess that's the other concern with timing, and I understand what Council Member Crofts was talking about, I'm, I don't disagree with the formality aspect of it, I agree that there, we should not be setting our own salaries, we should not be doing that, we should have an independent group looking at that, and, and going forward, there should be some process to that. But timing is, is a little bit weird for me, and then the detail of how it's established is also potentially going to be scrutinized in the timeframe, you know, who, who we pick to be on the salary commission will, will likely be scrutinized, and I think we need to think about that a little bit more. I'm glad we're talking about it, I think it's worth, worth the discussion, so.
Michelle, have you worked, or Jeff worked with salary commissions?
I have. Not closely, but I have seen them operate, yeah.
Not, I mean, everyone's different, but in the case of city council members for Shelton, what would be done beyond what was done in la, end of 2017, and what you presented here, as far as looking at comparable cities, what, what the council members get? I mean, wouldn't that be pretty much the extent of the research of?
Pretty much, yes, correct. You do the research of what's comparable, what's changed over time, since the last time where salaries were looked at, if anything, would be looked at, and what comparable cities do, and how they handle this aspect of city council.
Also time studies into how much time you are spending on your duties, basically.
Can I throw two cents in here on this? Probably what happened is, it was a kind of a little rush thing, you know, this three-person to seven-person thing, and when our past city manager Vicki Look, and from Vicki Look, presented this, I don't remember much, we didn't have much conversation about, we saw some comparables, but we didn't see any comparables on mayor salaries. I don't remember. And again, being a past mayor, and knowing the things I did, and the things I did and charged the city for what I did, and seeing what I could have done, you know, the continual requests of not being involved in a lot of stuff. So this current system of this 500 without the mayor's salary, I don't know if we had an option, or, but do you remember Vicki talking to you at all about, we could offer the mayor more money? So it wasn't, so we weren't even, it wasn't fair with, with the way we even set this up.
Yeah, I don't remember that at all.
In that regards, no offense to Vicki Look, I mean, I respect her, and I think she did a great job in doing that. Were you part of that?
I don't remember ever hearing her say anything about the mayor's salary.
And I understand Bob and Deidre not wanting more money, I understand that, and they can vote present if they want to, but if we don't do it now, when is the appropriate time? Is it November and December, so that it's set up for new people when they come in? Or is it a year from now, you have the conversation again? My concern is, whoever's sitting in the mayor's position needs to have a little more honor and respect for the, what they're doing for the city than 500 bucks a month.
Yeah, go for it.
Did that just come through, sir?
I, I'm just going to mention one thing, not, just to correct somebody, because I reviewed these notes from last 2017, there was a reference to mayor differential in the packet at that time.
Gosh, I don't remember that.
I, I don't remember any discussion on it, but it was, it was referenced.
Well, there's three people that were, either with the packets were-
There was so much going on back then that-
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I just didn't.
That's all I am, I just wanted, because I, I thought I had seen that, it was not much, but it was there.
Yeah, I don't think it was presented to us as an option.
So at this point, you know, any, we can't make any decisions tonight, it's not why we're here. I think at this point, it's up to the council for, council to direct us to create, or research and create a potential structure for a salary commission, and bring that to you in an open public meeting, or move on to other items on the work plan for 2019. And we can, and bring this back at a later date, potentially, whenever council decides that's what they would like to do.
Right. Let's, as a group, on those options, so either say no now, say yes now, or say yes, but delay till later next year, or sometime in the future. For an agenda item, I guess.
I'd say for myself, yes, and delay.
Delay it?
So if it's a no now, it's, it's never again? Is that the way you're kind of phrasing it?
Well, I mean, it'd always come up, but I guess, if we say no now, Jeff's going to take it off his list until the council brings it up again.
And we'll, and we'll develop a work plan in collaboration with the council for 2020, and that may be an item then, but that's completely up to you, what you'd like to direct us to work on.
But if we say no, it's off your work list until we bring it up?
Yep.
Yeah. I'm a no.
I'm a no for now.
Can I change my vote?
Well, we're not voting.
Can I change my, now that I understand it a little bit more? No. I know.
Okay, so let's, let's, let's delay it.
So what is, what did you change?
Well, I said yes and wait till later.
Okay, so-
So it's not a work item?
It's not a work.
We do not want it as a work item, so no need to put it on the future agenda.
For 2019.
Yeah.
Well.
So Bob, you were saying earlier that, what?
Are we good with that as a group, to not have an agenda item? Or plan to do it this year?
I, I would say wait till later, but I don't know if it's a direct no. I, I would say wait till later, but I don't know if it's a direct no, because I, I just don't, I still don't think it's really fair for, especially for the mayor.
Well, and to clarify, no, in this sense, just means, no, we're not asking staff to go develop-
Do anything more.
Right, we're just waiting.
Any more information at this point. It could come up again.
Yeah.
But at this point, that's nothing we're going to do.
For the next three or four months, we're staying.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say no for the next three or four months.
It's not a no never.
Right, so when we develop the 2020 work program, if this is something that council wants us to put on the work program to consider in 2020, and we absolutely can.
Yeah.
That's not a problem. But what I hear is a consensus not to work on it in 2019, and that's, and that's fine, and, you know, in November, or whenever we're developing the, the work program for 2020, if it's something that council would like to, we'll add it to the list, and we'll bring it back as an agenda.
Well, I would not agree with that. From my position, what I would recommend is that if we were going to do this before I am gone, which is on January 1st, I think we should make it be open to do it around that timeframe, so that the salary commission would be something that would be happening in the next January, February, or March for the new people. But maybe that's a decision that the new people are making, if the mayor at that time wants 500 dollars a month, and to do all of the things that I think a city need done, then that's that mayor's situation. So, I mean, if I was to say no for three or four, five months, my opinion would be, I would still think this group ought to possibly set it up, so that the mayor makes more than 500 bucks a month in the January, February, or whatever the following year. And if it doesn't happen, I'm gone. But I feel that there's a lot of things that a mayor does for the city, and they should be compensated more than someone that does one meeting a month, and council meetings, and smile and hug babies. That's it. Have said enough?
I, I believe our council members are doing much more than one meeting.
We do more than one meeting a month.
And we don't hug kids babies anyway, I mean, come on, I'm sure.
Yeah, and I, I gotta reiterate it, because it keeps kinda coming up, but you keep saying to give the mayor more money. The salary commission determines, we're not setting up the commission to get the mayor paid more money. That's not the point, right? So, we, we've already kind of created that atmosphere, so by saying that, now that atmosphere's been created, so we gotta backpedal from this and try again.
Yeah, the salary commission might just, well, leave it just like it is.
Or decrease it.
Or decrease it.
Yeah.
Schehalis is 150 bucks, so.
Careful what you ask for.
That's right.
Okay.
So, do we have our consensus?
I think we're good with that.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else?
We'll see you tomorrow night.
Okay, we're prepared.
What's going on tomorrow now, yeah?
Yeah.
Code enforcement, spotlight Shelton?
Spotlight Shelton, yeah.
Is it gonna be chocolate cake?
Code enforcement Shelton.
Spotlight Shelton.
Chocolate cake, no. Not, not tomorrow night. Cookies, though.